So I want to welcome everyone here today. Thank you very, very much for your time, your attendance and your attention. We greatly appreciate that. At this point in time, I would ask everyone to please stand. And Ms. Allison will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. If, in looking at item two of our agenda, is there any objection to approving the minutes as presented? Hearing none, the agenda, uh, excuse me, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Is there any objection to approving the agenda as presented? Y'all quiet today? Hearing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. I do have lists here today, a recognition of visitors, so I would like to recognize our guests at this time. We have two sheets, and I will try to make sure that I mention every name. If you wish, please stand so that we can affirm the fact that you're with us today. Allison Tyner, Sumter School District. If I mess up the name, you can tell me. Kelly Howard, Sumter School District. Chase Ferguson, Sumter School District. Craig King, PSTA. Thank you. Tremaine Owens, Sumter School District. Pam King, Sumter School District. Denise Robinson, SSD. Jennifer Rainville, Appleseed Legal Justice Center. Thank you. David Driscoll, Public Consulting Group, PCG. Erica Harold, Sumter School District. Tahisha Fortune, Sumter School District. Danisha Griffin, Sumter School District. Charlene McKnight, Sumter School District. And Sheila Pace, Sumter School District. Until we get to the back. Karen Wrestler, Sumter School District. Cynthia Stalgiven. I gave it my best. Thank you so much. Tammy White, Teach Right USA. And Tracy Williams, Teach Right USA. Thank you, everyone. Please, please know that we do appreciate having people attend. It is your public education that we are investing time, effort, and energy into, and we're grateful for this time today. I don't think there is any news media here at this time. We will have... I'm just checking for state for public comment. I see it now. So, no news media. All right. Welcome to everyone in attendance. If you remember last month, I talked briefly about St. Valentine, St. Valentine's Day. Well, this month's public educational homily is about St. Patrick's Day and the common misconceptions about it. First, St. Patrick was not Irish. He was British. He was never really concerned with four-leaf clovers. For him and his ministry, the three-leaf clover or shamrock was far more important. Granted, the much rarer four-leaf clover exists, but was not in any way associated with him and only later came to signify good luck. Second, St. Patrick did not chase snakes out of Ireland. In fact, Great Britain itself only has three species of snakes, but none of them made it to Ireland. An island at its closest point is still 14 miles away from the Mull of Kentiah in Scotland. For anybody old, you may remember that Paul McCartney and Wings had a song, "The Mull of Kentiah." If you haven't listened to it, you should. Third, green was not the original color associated with Ireland, especially with St. Patrick's Day. You can read about it if you want, but the color was blue, somewhat in John's tie here. It was not until the 17th or 18th century that the omnipresent green shamrock became the national symbol. So why do I wax long about these misconceptions or misperceptions? You see, I think far too often we view public education with a blurred or faulty lens. We on this board take seriously the role we play in improving and in strengthening our public schools. Are public schools above reproach? Absolutely not. We can always be better, but schools, and I would say many, do exceptional jobs educating students from all levels of society. Today, we have far more choices than ever before. Private schools, parochial schools, home schools, charter schools, magnet schools, and traditional community public schools. Do not be deceived that all public schools are failing. They're not. If you get right down to it, most of the educators with whom I am familiar are pillars of their local society, good church members, and do not fit into some of the categories that the political or journalistic spectrum would consider us to be. And we believe, as public educators, in the beauty of America as the hallmark of excellence and opportunity. So, as you go and as you think what you know, always be reminded that what you think you know may not be as you know you know. And in the words then of the great philosopher Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that. For now. And I now turn it over to our esteemed State Superintendent of Education, Ms. Ellen Weaver.
Thank you so much, David. Well, I am so pleased to be able to bring four primary things that I wanted to call to y'all's attention today as members of the State Board. The first is just an update on the state budget process, so this week is Budget Week in the House. And I am very grateful for the partnership that the House of Representatives has extended to the State Department of Education in our budget requests. We fared very, very well, especially relative to other agencies within the state system. And I think it just speaks again to the important priority that our General Assembly members put on exactly what you're talking about, which is our public education system. So very thankful for that. I will be presenting to the Senate Finance Subcommittee this Thursday, the same presentation that I gave to the House earlier this year. So the budget will be making its way over to the Senate, and we'll be glad to provide more specific updates to you all once we kind of have a better sense of where the final product might ultimately land. As Ms. Allison knows, the House has just taken the first swing at it. So there's still a lot of negotiating to be done between the two bodies, and then, of course, the governor has his say. So we have a ways to go, but just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Excuse me. The second thing that I wanted to mention to you is that I previewed for you a few months ago what the department is calling Project Raise Your Hand, which is a school support initiative that we are undertaking as employees of the department. So we actually are allowing, or people within the department who wish to participate in this voluntary program, the ability to use up to eight hours of their monthly work time to support a school. And I think that that is so vital as we seek to truly connect our agency's work with the frontline work that is happening in classrooms. And I just want to tell you, I have had at least six people within this agency stop me in the hall completely unsolicited and just share what a joy their experience had been. So we are partnering with our neighbor schools. Our neighborhood schools here at the department are Richland One. We are zoned for Richland One here at the State Department of Education. And so we have 10 schools that have raised their hands to say, yes, please send us employees of the department to help. And so we are now deployed into 10 schools here locally, and it's everything from... I've heard a story about a young lady who was helping to catalog books in the library. I've been able to go and read in several schools. You know, even just passing out computers and supplies for a teacher while her children are at lunch allows her to have time to actually get her mind around her planning for the afternoon instruction. And these teachers are so grateful for every little bit of time that we give them. Another impactful story that I heard is one of our math specialists here is actually now modeling a lesson. She got put in the classroom of a first-year teacher, and so she is now coaching that teacher on, well, here's some ideas for how you can use math manipulatives to improve your practice and your instruction. And so we never know going in what we're going to be called to do, but the fact is is that whatever we're called to do is impactful and is making a difference. And I think often, I guess my quote would be, "It's more blessed to give than to receive." And so I have certainly seen that in terms of the department staff and just the joy that they have received from being able to be back in a school setting. So that was a quick update on Project Raise Your Hand. I'm also very excited to hear that Sumter is in the House today because March the 25th is National Science of Reading Week. And one of my favorite people to talk about in terms of literacy is Mary McLeod Bethune, someone who the state of Florida has tried to steal from us as South Carolina, but we know that she was born and raised right here in Maysville. She taught in Sumter County before she moved to Florida, and her famous quote is, "The whole world opened to me when I learned how to read." And I think that is the gift that we are seeking to give to each student and why I have put such a priority focus on the science of reading in my first year. And so just today, the new rewrite of the Read to Succeed law, which Ms. Allison was part of passing, and it's in original form, has become law. So we look forward to hopefully having a ceremonial bill signing here with the governor in the next few weeks, which would be very appropriate the week of March 25th if we're able to work that out for the Science of Reading Week. But just a quick synopsis of what the reboot, our Read to Succeed 2.0 does. It really narrows the focus of the legislation from K-12 to K-5. And it's not that sixth to 12th grade is not vitally important. It is absolutely critical, but I think you have to have that strategic focus on the early grades to really leverage your resources for impact. And so it narrows the focus of the bill. It eliminates many of the endorsement requirements for those middle and upper grades that we heard were onerous and duplicative and frankly not really delivering much value to teachers. And so we're always looking for how we can streamline and save teacher time. It provides for ongoing professional development, such as the letters training that we are already rolling out, that I've talked to you all about in the past. And then it also streamlines testing, which is something that we have heard repeatedly from teachers is important. And so this streamlines the universal screener and the formative assessment requirements that we have as a state. And so this will actually save time for students and for teachers. So I am very excited to see this become law, and obviously now the real work starts, right? As hard as it is to get something done in the General Assembly, that's just the first step. And I had the opportunity to speak to the Senate Education Committee about two weeks ago as they were passing this to the Senate floor. And, you know, what I shared with them was that we can have the best plan on paper here at the state level, and if it isn't actually translated and supported in classroom practice, it doesn't matter. And that's why I'm so thankful for the work Abby Duggins is sitting here, Matthew Ferguson. Well, I'm so thankful for the work that they're doing because they are helping to translate this policy on paper into real impact and support for teachers and students in the classroom. So that is the quick update on that. And then finally, many of you may not be aware, because, you know, what's old is new again, that we actually have a law here in South Carolina called the Parental Involvement in Their Children's Education Act. And there are many pieces of this act that are already being implemented. But as I think about maybe changing some of the perceptions like you were talking about, David, one of the things that we have got to do within the public education system is build strong bridges of trust between parents and teachers, because that's ultimately where impact is made. You can't have success in one without the other. And so we are looking to lean really into that legislation from over 20 years ago now at this point to really see what are some ideas that they may have had in that bill that we could maybe do more on as a Department of Education to support our districts in their parent engagement programs and also to just engage and build capacity within parents. Because I truly think that the vast majority of parents want to engage. They want to know how to help their children, but they don't always have the resources to do it. And so I think there's so much that we can do as I think about this early literacy piece to provide parents with things that they could do at home with their children to help promote early literacy, to help tutor their children in math. And so we'll be working a lot on that in the coming years as a department. But in view of that law, I was really privileged a few weeks ago to go out into Lexington Four to their Early Childhood Development Center, and they have an initiative there that they have run for over a decade, I believe now, called Parents as Leaders. And they are bringing parents of their three, four, and five-year-olds that they serve there at that school in one morning every month to talk about how the parent can support what the child is learning at school within the home. And these parents are so engaged. We talk to parents out there who have actually had multiple children now who have gone through that early learning center, and they sign up to do PALS every time because they said we always get value out of it. And so I was so excited to see the excitement of the parents. The students loved it, and just the level of support that the teachers felt in being able to engage with those parents. So with that, we'll go ahead and cue a very short video about the work that they're doing in Lexington Four.
We've been doing our PALS program for 14 years now, and we've seen it grow exponentially every year. It is a chance for us to build that homeschool connection, to foster positive relationships with our families, get them into the school so that they can see what their three-year-olds, their four-year-olds, and their kindergartners are doing. A lot of times, they think that they just come here for like daycare, but it's not daycare. We're a school, and we want to show them, this is what your child is learning.
And so then you'll do some crunchiness or child's pose.
We want to give them strategies to use at home to help reinforce what they're already learning in their classroom. So it's a fantastic opportunity for parents to feel comfortable coming into the school. They get to spend time with their child, which is a huge draw, and they get to have fun. And so they keep coming back for more every month.
We just see better relationships between our teachers and parents in the schools. We've broken down a lot of barriers. The parents, you know, now they meet the assistant principal, they meet the academic coach, they meet the school counselor, they meet their kids' teachers. And so it just fosters better and more open communication and relationships, a building of those positive things. And then really, we're seeing really academic outcomes.
Learn and the way they process things is entirely different, and you have to be able to match that, and there is a science to it. So just, again, having the program to remind us about how to do those things, it's just been amazing.
Give them a big hand, Lexington Four. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Weaver. Very, very, very exciting things happening. Love the idea of Project Raise Your Hand. At this point, we will all attempt to be quiet and make sure that we raise our hand because the parliamentarian now comes forward for his parliamentary comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, honorable board members. It's March, and you are now all, no doubt, planning your wardrobe. You retire for the weekend to be royal blue and not green after our instruction from the chairman. I would note for the record, he is using a green pen.
I'm Irish.
As you wear green or blue, please remember to file your statement of economic interest. Just prior to this meeting, I sent you all an email, a reminder with instructions, links that you can use, and I and probably others will be staying around after adjournment to assist while you all have laptops in front of you to the extent that you have the information that you need for that. So that concludes the comment for today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very, very much. At this point, we will entertain public comment. We do have one person that has scheduled and requested to speak up, and we appreciate that. Kelly Howard from Sumter County School District. We appreciate your interest in public education. Ms. Howard, you will be allotted five minutes for your comments. Since we're hearing comments for the first time, it is our policy to accept comments as information. If we have any questions or need additional information, we will contact you at a later point. Thank you very much for understanding our procedures. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I am Kelly Howard, and I am Sumter County School District Teacher of the Year for their current school year. I am here with our teacher forum, which is made up of our district, our, sorry, our Teachers of the Year within each campus. So if y'all wouldn't mind standing up for a moment. And we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for allowing us to come and see you. So as we're here for our Legislative Hill Day, we've spent a little bit of time everywhere, but we want to make sure that we save the best for last. So we're here with y'all until it's time for us to go. And just thank you so much for the opportunity, everything that you guys do for us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we do appreciate very much your willingness to come and be with us today. Please, we encourage others to do so. There was no meeting today as it relates to State Board items of the Policy and Legislative Committee. That committee did not meet. Therefore, we would like to move to the Educator Professions Committee report. I recognize Ms. Johnson to present the Educator Professions Committee report at this time.
The Education Professions Committee did meet this morning and heard one action item. That was about the Critical Needs Subjects in Schools for Employment of Retired Teachers for the 2024-25th school year. This action item was approved by the committee and was placed on the consent agenda. We also heard several items, four items, just for information that I'd like to share with you. We heard from the Professional Review Committee, educator preparation providers and program updates. So those are mainly universities, colleges in our areas that have education preparation programs, and if they have updated their program in some way, we heard that this morning. We also heard about the Annual Report on Individuals Certified Through American Board, the Report on Individuals Certified Through the South Carolina Teach for America Program, and the Annual Report on Individuals Certified Through Teachers of Tomorrow. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. A motion has been made from the committee. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Y'all, easy. All right. If not, then can we ask for a vote to approve? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very, very much. We now turn our attention to the Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee report. I recognize Dr. Lynn to present the SLA report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We began the meeting by amending the attachment for SLA 01 to delete the area of the criminal justice. During the Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee meeting this morning, the committee approved the 2024 recommendations for appointments to the Instruction Material Review Panels as presented. The committee had no information items. The committee voted to place SLA 01 on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lynn. A motion has been made by the committee, and again, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Everybody should have a copy. Dr. Lee DeAndrea gave us a new, updated copy. Right? Lee and I went to school together long ago at Clemson, long ago. If not, we call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very, very much. In the Educator-Licensor Committee report, with the Educator-Licensor Subcommittee met, I would like to recognize Ms. Kreminger to present the Educator-Licensor Subcommittee report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Education-Licensor Committee heard 13 cases this morning with a total of one public reprimand, two revocations, and 10 suspensions.
Thank you very much. Under the full board, ELC, we had three cases. We heard one for initial certification and approval and two denials. It should be noted at this time, and as well as with Ms. Kreminger, that in cases that Ms. Kreminger had in Subcommittee, Ms. Collier recused herself from cases seven and 11. And in case three of the full board, Dr. Stapleton recused herself in one matter as well. So we have all of those, and I will look to my very best friend in the world, Allen. Do we take another vote?
Those were ratified into full board earlier.
I just do that sometimes to not make me look as dumb as I am. Y'all just, y'all fine out there. I just am checking to make sure. All right. The consent agenda has been distributed. We should know of that. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Stapleton. Don't leave me hanging. Is there a second?
Alzaka. Allison.
Yes. Rita Allison with a second. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, by like sign. Motion carries. At this point in time, we would like to move into our State Board of Education Board report from our department. At this point, there are no items for approval, but we do have items for information, and I'd like to bring Matthew Ferguson, Dr. Ferguson, up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Dr. O'Shields, very soon, you're going to be able to call me doctor and it actually be accurate. So it is Mr. Ferguson until May, but hopefully in May, it'll finally be doctor. But I wanted to take a few moments and talk about Read to Succeed to begin with. So it is going to be wonderful to have some of the changes in the new Read to Succeed law. And as Superintendent Weaver alluded to, the devil is in the implementation. And so we have been working through how to roll those changes out in a way that benefits children and has an impact on their student outcomes. And so one of those that I know Mr. Harrington has been really interested in is how do we get ahead of the letters training and make sure that we are working with our educator prep programs to provide that training through educator prep? So I wanted to start by saying that the Read to Succeed legislation does include a requirement for those seeking initial certification to pass a reading assessment that is based in the science of reading. And I'm also happy to report that we have started a letters cohort of IHE faculty in those educator prep programs. Those are going strong, and those professors are showing up to those meetings and are participating and are actively engaged in collaborating with the department to learn that, new learning for them, and to think through how to implement that in their educator prep practice. And building off of that, I also wanted to share with you today about another collaboration that we are working on. So the literacy specialists who are specifically focused on our 4K, our CERTUP classrooms, they are also beginning the Early Childhood Letters Training this month, and they are working to complete that before the beginning of next school year so that they can also begin supporting the 4K teachers in their learning of the letters journey. And we are partnering with a school district and inviting other interested parties across the state to participate in that training as well to get ahead of our rollout of 4K early childhood letters, hoping that that makes it all the way through the budget this season so that we can begin that in August as well. Also, as an update, we are currently working through ELA adoptions across the state. So boards and districts are asked to have that, their selection made by the beginning of April and to have that to the department in the beginning of April so that we can have the new materials shipped and in classrooms by the beginning of next school year. And then we are also working with districts to finalize details around the completion of the statewide rollout of letters beginning next year. And, you know, there are about 8,000 teachers who will begin their letters journey in August and working through scheduling and making sure that that goes as smoothly as possible. We are working through that, and our vendor and we all, it keeps us up at night, but we feel like it's going to go off without any hitch beginning in August next year. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes the literacy portion of my update.
Are there any questions? One, I would say thank you, especially for coordinating, because it is hard with departments of higher ed, and getting their buy-in so that it's not that we're having to take it. So I greatly appreciate that, the efforts on the part of you, Dr. Duggins and others. Thank you very much.
Sir. Sir. And then moving on to our HOPE Network update, I wanted to let you know that like the state, Allendale and Williamsburg are both working through the budget process currently and looking at what the Esser Cliff looks like in those districts and how we plan accordingly for that. And we will hopefully have that finalized in the next few months to be able to support, to present to the superintendent. We are also working with both Allendale and Williamsburg and also the other districts who are tracking towards participation in our HOPE Network in a district transformation academy. So those meetings happen monthly, and folks from the district office on the instructional team come together and plan for how they will organize their system to be focused on student outcomes and instruction. And all of our districts have been participating in that for the last several months and working very deliberately about how to collaborate around improved student outcomes. And then finally, I also wanted to let you know that both districts are busy recruiting teachers for next year because this is the intense season, and we're moving into contract season. So both districts are out recruiting heavily. And as an update, we've been able to connect Williamsburg specifically with Clemson and a grant that they have around bringing teacher residencies to the PD. And so Williamsburg is now going to be participating as a partner in that. And then Allendale, thanks to the chair, has now been approved to be a site for Teach for America. So Teach for America will be an additional partner to bring teachers to Allendale beginning next school year. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my HOPE Network update.
Are there any questions of soon-to-be Dr. Ferguson?
Comment or question?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much for the work you're doing in that early childhood area. Could you give us an idea of where we are, what school districts may have implemented, and how many are left to implement universal, universal 4K?
So I am not aware of a district that currently has universal 4K. There are three districts, three or two? Two. There are two districts that have not yet transitioned to participation in SURDEP for the full-day state-funded 4K. And those are two of our larger districts across the state. Yes, sir. There are two districts that are still outliers on the SURDEP piece. They do provide, in fairness to them, they do provide 4K classrooms. It is, just does not fall under the SURDEP full day. Many of those are paid for with local funds. Some of those are half-day, some of those are full-day, but they don't fall under the same guidelines as the state-funded 4K.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to comment briefly how thankful I am for the hard work that this HOPE Network work is forcing us to do within the agency in terms of us breaking down internal silos and figuring out how we really align our work across offices to provide a compendium of support for these districts that we are serving. And I'm not going to say that we are there by any stretch of the imagination yet, but Mr. Almost Dr. Ferguson is doing a great job leading that work. And with the folks here, PCG and the audience are also helping us think through how we continue to do continuous quality improvement here in the agency. Because I never want it to be said that we're out there telling other people how to get their house in order, and we haven't gotten our own house in order. And so it's really critical to me that as a department, we are leading by example in terms of how we're aligning our resources for strategic impact around student outcomes. So I just wanted to say thank you to Matthew for the work that he's doing with his team on the HOPE Network.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. In looking at any other business, please, committee members, all of you, please turn in your travel forms, make sure they're signed, turned in to Tracy. At this time, it looks as though we have the opportunity to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? That's Mr. Walters. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by so many people, I wouldn't know, but I'm giving it to Ms. Schor. All right. All in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.